Yeah.
I saw.
All this meeting's ordered, please silence all your cellphones and electronic devices so that we can stand for the application of council members' briefs.
Father, to heaven, hallowed be thy name. I came to come; I will be done on earth as it is in heaven.
Let's just stay out there, bud. Forgive us.
As we forgive those who trespass against us, we descend out of temptation but deliver us from evil.
Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All speakers should have signed up in advance with the city clerk. Each speaker will please use the podium. Please state your name and address before beginning your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Council will not engage in debate with the speaker. On your first bell, that means you have thirty seconds left. Please wrap it up because we'll have to stop you on the second bell.
Richard Beatty.
Good evening. My name is Richard Beatty. I live at 123 Summit Street, right here in the city. I am a, the president of the Landmark Society of Tennessee County, and I've come here tonight to remind you of a very important event about to occur here in the city. Larry Barnes, a city historian and a member of our board, and I, along with the rest of our board, have engaged in a project to create a dramatic retelling of the Brisbane story, as we call it, Brothers at Odds. James Brisbane, of course, came from Philadelphia with Elocut back in eighteen oh two or so, became the fellow that delivered the goods to the folks in this settlement, became the first postmaster of the city, married a woman by the name of Mary Stevens. In eighteen oh nine, after, eighteen oh eight, they were married, eighteen oh nine, they had their first son Albert, and their second son George was born in eighteen twelve. George was a very endeavorous man, or, excuse me, James, became very wealthy, brought the first railroad here to Batavia, and became wealthy, shall we say. Alright, so why are we doing this? Well, we want to bring attention to the Brisbane Mansion, which everyone knows is going to be vacated by the police department in, I'm guessing, a year and a half worth of time. So we worked, we reached out to Derek Maxfield of the Tennessee Community College, a history professor, and quite adept at his historic retelling of, I believe, General Grant and, with his partner, General Sherman, Civil War reenactments. And he, with, using Larry's wonderful research on the Brisbane's of Batavia, he created a one-act play, which we are going to present on June the third, Friday, June the third, and Friday, or, excuse me, Saturday, June eleventh, that's a Saturday night, at seven PM. That's going to be at the Presbyterian Church. And then on Wednesday, the fifteenth of June, we're going to do it one more time, and that's going to be at Tennessee Community College, room T one oh two in the Technology Building. A little bit of background, Albert was a bit of, I used the term bon vivant, which is kind of an odd term, but Albert went off to Europe as a teenager, rubbed shoulders with all kinds of famous people, artists, musicians, sculptors probably, got involved with some sort of socialistic philosophy. He came back to Batavia with a wife in tow, ended up having a series of wives and a number of children, ten children altogether. His brother George was of the opinion that he was hopping from bed to bed in Europe, so, you know, didn't have a whole lot of respect for his brother. The whole play is set in the year eighteen seventy-eight. It's going to be at the Brisbane Mansion in its prime, in the parlor of the Brisbane Mansion. The characters will be Albert and George, and George's wife Sarah, and a visit from General Upton. Derek decided it would be interesting to bring in a well-known character to add a little depth to the play. Derek did a fantastic job of creating a play, creating some humor, creating some, you know, something you're really going to want to see. The play is about forty minutes long. It, to give you a real brief summary of it, George and Sarah have a discussion about what's going on in the village at that time. There was problems with the waterworks, they were staining their water. There was a murder that happens on the outskirts of town. General Upton comes for a visit, he leaves, and George goes to his office. Albert comes breezing in. He had a glass eye, and he walked very, you know, crazily, very good speaker. When George and Albert are in the room together, there's a battle royal. You know, George says at the end that you have a big heart, Albert, but you're hopelessly misguided. So the two of them go back and forth over the issues of the day, and that's primarily over money. Mr. Brisbane, James Brisbane, left a pile of money, but with no direction on how it should be spent. And so we're doing a play to highlight that tension between the two brothers. At the end of the play, and I think this is really terrific, the young woman playing Sarah stands in front of the audience and ponders what will become of our fine home. Our son James does not have any interest in living here. What's going to become of our fine home? So she had that worry in eighteen seventy-eight, and we have that worry in twenty twenty-two. What is going to become of the Brisbane? At the conclusion of the play, Larry Barnes and I, and Derek Maxfield, the writer of the piece, will address the public and ask for public comments and continue from that point. Hopefully, we'll get a big turnout, which means everybody here. I already spoke at Catherine Roth's funeral, which I don't know if that's bad taste or not, but, you know, being the president of the Landmark Society, as Catherine was, I got thirty seconds. So I hope everyone will come out. I really, you know, the actors that are doing this are doing it with no hope of any financial remuneration. I mean, Derek is going to get a fee for his services, but the actors are really, really into it. It's going to be a lot of fun. I hope we get a big, big turnout. So thank you very much. And can I leave the program? I'll leave it here for you folks to look at. This is a rough draft, so.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening, folks.
Okay, so any, our council response to that?
To assure you, Mr. Berry, I will be at the play. And also, when we start to talk about what happens to the Brisbane Mansion, I watched the Richmond go down, I watched the Kerry go down. I will not watch the Brisbane go down.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Communications.
Glow submitted their application for their annual corporate cop five K on Thursday, August fourth, at six PM. Begins and ends at Centennial Park, and this is to raise funds for the Glow YMCA.
Any questions concerned on that?
Yeah, Mr. President, it says they're going to have alcohol at their event, wine and beer and all that, and it is in a city park. Chapter thirty-seven of our city code specifically prohibits this unless a city council were to grant special permission, which I think would require a resolution. I'm just curious why they're not selling it or anything, but they're having people bring wine and beer to the park.
I was under the impression, correct me if I'm wrong, do we not allow alcoholic beverages in parks if people are having, they rent the park for a party, do we not allow that?
As long as they don't, not glass containers. Chief, did you? I don't see any violation. More than welcome to bring it, as long as it's not glass containing.
Chapter thirty-seven four says, "The provisions of this chapter shall not apply in the event of a fair picnic or other community gathering for which special permission has been granted by the city council, the city of Batavia, or its designated agent." So I would interpret that myself as being on a per case.
But is this the special permission? This application and us waving it through, that would be applying for a special permission.
We really don't vote on it or anything.
I don't think we can. We can't prevent someone from gathering in a public place and having a picnic. We're just trying to assist so that there isn't confusion, or maybe double booking, or something like that. So we basically want to know about it so that we can provide safety and any other services they may need. And then if it costs anything, they have to pay it. George, do you want to jump in here? Am I off on this? I don't have the section in front of me. But I was under the impression that if someone wanted to have a picnic, they can drink any beverages they want, it's just there was a glass container.
I think generally you're right, Council President. I would defer to the chief for any violations that may come up during the park usage. But generally speaking, as it relates to event applications, if there's a specific event in a downtown space, there might be requests for grand shop insurance as well. But I would defer to the clerk as well if this event has happened in the past. There's never been an issue with it, and it seems to be on par with other events that happen throughout the community.
Right.
Yeah, historically, we have any issues with this event. And, you know, it's our understanding that if the event is approved through city council, that everything in that package is all.
And I remember last year, when I was called, there was no sales. I think each person, each agency that had their employees or whatever were going to run, brought their own picnic supply, and they supplied their own, to their own people within that small group.
Yeah, and my understanding is there's any issues with any type of disturbances or anything like that, or even messes up. I believe everybody fleeces up after themselves very well.
But, I mean, the section of the code is kind of off, and we should probably look into that, make sure that's corrected, or we're not misinterpreting it wrong. If he's reading it right out the code, then maybe there needs to be an adjustment there. We can just look into that at some other point. I don't think it affects this particular case. Any other questions on this one, bud?
Just a small comment. I'm not sure why you made moves at a run, but it does say on the application, will you have alcohol? So it gives you the permission to say, yes, I will have alcohol, it's on there. So once we say yes, we've said you may have your alcohol.
And the group that's putting it on is not supplying alcohol, it's individuals that are arriving and they have a picnic after the meeting, or a beer or a wine, or their food. So that's the way it was last year when I had it, so. Any other questions on that? Okay, next one?
Kowanis submitted their application for a five K road race on Monday, July fourth, from nine to eleven AM. This would also start and finish at Centennial Park.
Any questions on that? Okay, next one?
The Muck Dogs have requested to have fireworks at the end of their games on Saturday, June fourth and June eighteenth.
Concerned questions on that? Okay.
The Bits submitted their application for the Jackson Square Concerts on Fridays from July first to August twenty-sixth, seven to nine PM in Jackson Square. They had also requested to have concerts in Jackson Square on June thirtieth, July twenty-eighth, and August twenty-fifth. These are Thursday nights from seven to nine PM.
Any concerns?
Blue Pearl Yoga has requested to hold yoga in the park. I believe she did this a couple years ago as well, Tuesdays and Thursdays, June through September, in Centennial Park.
I just have a question. It says six thirty or seven. They never said AM or PM. I'm wondering, they going to use it as dawn or dusk?
My, last year it was in the evening. I will confirm with her.
I was honestly just curious.
Yep, I'm pretty sure it's PM.
Any other questions? Okay, continuing.
HCR Home Care is requesting a ribbon cutting on June eighth, it's a Wednesday, from eleven AM to two PM. This would be right outside of forty-seven A Batavia City Center.
Any questions on that? Okay.
Venue Entertainment has requested to have a community block party on Saturday, August sixth, two to ten PM on South Swan Street. This would be from Elocut to Sumner.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, all right, Mr. President. It says alcohol will be sold at this event, but at the Polish Falcons, will that be confined to the premise of the Falcons, or will people be able to buy alcohol and walk in the street?
The way I understand the law, they'll have to stay inside. There's no entertainers allowed unless they're in the back of the Falcons, which is the Falcons property under the pavilion. But I don't know exactly, I know they're closing the street off, and I was trying to figure this out myself, exactly where, I mean, when I consider South Swan, I consider way down at the end. This is more like Middle Swan. So I was wondering how they were going to try to pull this off. Chief, did you get any other information on this, as far as road closures or anything?
I'd like to check with the assistant chief, who handles the event application.
Because it says there's no cost from any of the departments, so if we're shutting off traffic, somebody's got to go put the barricades up and take them down and drop the law.
Well, the assumption is they would probably do that during their work day, leave the barricades, and then have the event, the event planners and organizers set the barricades up and then move them out.
Correct. There were four barricades to be put in the parkway by the Polish Falcons. And then Mr. Smith would put them up, and then they would be picked up the next business day.
So they're basically talking about the Polish Falcons in the vicinity in front of, the Swan Street area in front of the Falcons there.
Correct. And then the organizer just puts them out where needed, and they've done that in the past.
Chief, maybe you'd know, you might know, I mean, liquor lot, if you buy a drink in a premise, you have to stay in that premise?
There's an open container law in the city of Neve, so they wouldn't be able to just come out, you know, on the sidewalk and go free.
Right. It's a chapter that I quoted earlier. It's also open container law and all this.
But they have that large area behind there, so if they were to purchase in there and then walk out into the pavilion area or into the parking lot of the Falcons, that's kind of their premise, I would think.
Yeah, so let me check with the assistant chief, whether the property event organizer regarding this, see if there's any clarity on that, like the city manager.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I saw what they were doing here, but, I mean, I was making a lot of assumptions. I would rather know exactly what we're getting into so that the day of the event, we don't have a lot of chaos, confusion, people complaining.
Well, it looks to, if I'm just reading through this, once Bob brought this up, it says nowhere on the application that they will be selling alcohol, okay? It just says, will there be alcohol at your event? Yes. Type of alcoholic beverages? Will you be providing alcohol to your group? No. Will you be selling alcohol to your group? No. Will people be allowed to bring alcohol to the event? No. And then, will you be applying to the New York State Liquor Authority for a permit to sell? And that's not, not applicable. Alcohol, will you purchase through the Polish Falcons? Right. So that falls under, I've spent fourteen years in my career in the liquor business. That falls under the Polish Falcons license to sell, and when you sell on premise, if they're, if the Polish Falcons want to sell alcoholic beverages outside of the bar area in their facility, they actually, the law requires them to have an independent license outside of the license for them to sell inside their premise. So same with golf courses. When the beer cart comes around, that's a special license that the golf courses have to buy. They cannot sell off the permit from indoor license. So if the Polish Falcons are selling it, they'll be selling it most likely out of the bar downstairs. And if people are wandering around the premises with a bottle of beer, I believe that they're allowed to do that. They're just not allowed to sell it outside.
All the transitions have to take place inside.
But they can't leave the premise also.
They can't, well, no, that, that falls under an open container.
We'll also go back to their members.
If they allow people to wander the streets and it's coming from there, there could be a complaint. So if you could just verify and remind them of the concerns, and then we just want to make sure they have a safe, fun time, and that there's not too many complaints about it shuts them down, and then it avoids the whole problem of trying to provide a block party. It's all allowed to be successful.
I have to believe, too, if the Polish Falcons are involved in any way, that it would probably be well organized and well controlled. We'd never, that I'm aware of, if they ever had problems.
That's been my experience, but just to be safe. Just to be safe.
Avoid confusion.
Correct. Okay, continuing.
The David McCarthy Memorial Foundation will be hosting their naming rights for the Ice Arena on Friday, June third, at five PM at the arena.
Is that an event application, or are they just making a notification?
Yep, it's on there. Number twenty-nine.
Because I couldn't find the.
What's the kind of application?
No problem. Okay, any questions on that? Go ahead.
I could think of a better name. I was right. David McCarthy is a fantastic person, and I just want a thing called Radio Oil and the McCarthy Foundation as well.
I see good things happening over there from here out forward, so. Anyone else? Okay, the next?
Keller Williams of Western New York Home Motors is looking to have a workshop on Saturday, July twenty-third, twelve to three PM in the city center concourse. Do you educate the community about home buying, the home buying process, or becoming, having a career in real estate?
Any questions on that? Okay, and the next one?
The last one was submitted by Gregory Monroe. This was formerly submitted under Just King's Chicken Barbecue on Saturday, June fourth, one to four PM in Austin Park.
Any questions with concerns on that? Okay. The next city council conference and business meeting will be held Monday, June thirteenth, seven PM, City Hall House Boardroom, second floor, city center. Today, we have a couple of proclamations. The first one is somewhat of a repeat. We provided this one at the flag commemoration at the cemetery this morning. Thank you very much, sir. The police department had an awesome ceremony honoring the retired police officers of the county that have passed on, put little plaques and flags on each one of the graves that they can find. If anyone knows of a grave that maybe we missed, if we can provide that information, we'll do what we can to get that to the chief so that he can see to it that there is a flag and honor bestowed upon their grave. I will read the proclamation that I read there, and then we have two others that we'll follow right after. Whereas the officers of the city of Batavia Police Department are committed for the preservation of life and property, risking their lives to provide protection, law, and order, and serving the cause of justice. The officers of the city of Batavia Police Department accept a profound responsibility and work to uphold our laws, safeguard our rights and freedoms, and serve on the front lines in the fight against crime in an effort to keep our neighborhoods safe. Many of the officers dedicated several years serving the residents of the city of Batavia, most serving longer than twenty years. Their service to the city meant time away from their families and loved ones in order to protect the community that they took in all the safeguard. Each year, the city of Batavia will recognize that dedicated and brave officers have been laid to rest since retiring from the police department by placing memorial flags at each officer's graveside in remembrance of their service to the city. Now therefore be it resolved that I, city council president and retired police lieutenant Eugene Jankowski Jr., on behalf of the city council of the city of Batavia, do hereby make this proclamation to honor our departed police officers who have retired from the city of Batavia Police Department, who by their loyal and selfless devotion to their duties have rendered dedicated service to our community, and to declare May twenty-third as the city of Batavia Police Department Flag Commemoration Day. Thank you. There isn't enough words to put my gratitude into this, and I believe the community feels the same way. They're out there every night, holidays, weekends, good weather and bad, and sometimes we take it for granted. But we can do the things we can do and enjoy our community because they provide a safe place for us to live, work, and play. So thank you from my heart. I think the next one is Ms. Smith, hundred-year birthday. Do you want to read that one?
Whereas Helen Ada Smith will be honored by friends and relatives on the occasion of her one-hundredth birthday on June second of twenty twenty-two. And whereas she was born in Stafford, New York, on June second, nineteen twenty-two, and has been a lifelong resident of this community. And whereas she became the wife of Paul H. Smith, married on April twenty-seventh, nineteen forty-six, at Saint Paul's Christian Church in Stafford, New York. And this marriage was blessed with two children, four grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren. And whereas, in addition to being a wife and mother, she has been active in church and civic responsibilities, including nineteen forty graduation from New York High School, nineteen forty-three recipient of the Army Navy Production Board, resident by Taylor Instrument Company, nineteen forty-five recipient of the American National Restaurant Volunteer Certificate, active with the council, dated by the council for many years, and fifty-six-year member of the Order of the Eastern Star. And whereas, during a long and productive lifetime, she has demonstrated in countless ways her dedication to the welfare of others, and has earned the respect and affection of people from all walks of life and all ages. And whereas, she has lived during the most eventful century of this world's history, and in her quiet way has been force for good and stabilizing influence on most of our people during these turbulent years. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Batavia hereby extends this proclamation to Helen Ada Smith on the occasion of her one-hundredth birthday with sincere congratulations and best wishes for many more productive years.
Yeah, let's do this.
City of Batavia proclamation, Nick Sinney. I used to know your other brother, Nick Sinney. Whereas Nick Sinney has been a lifelong resident of the city of Batavia, he is an exemplary community and neighborhood volunteer. Whereas voucher community service is a integral part of the operations spirit of the city of Batavia. We don't see much of that anymore either, unfortunately. We honor those who generously give their time and talents to improve their communities. Whereas Nick Sinney has been a group leader that's kept Redfield Parkway law organized for almost twenty years, taking over the holiday tree responsibility in the mid-two thousands, organizing the participant list, purchasing Christmas trees for the entire street, collecting the money for the trees, and then organizing the pickup and drop-off of all fifty-eight trees, gathering organizers to help home the folks to haul the trees up, and measuring using a bamboo pole that has been used since the turn of the eighteen hundreds. I think your neighborhoods are jumping.
He made the poles. He made the poles.
And that's Nick Sinney's service, pressure of Redfield Parkway Association, keeping updated lists of email for all its current residents. He's also responsible for tree plaques, replacing the parkway in front of his house every holiday here and year. Whereas it is Nick Sinney's selfless volunteer spirit that has kept us going after losing Kathneon just before the pandemic. His organizational skills and spirit brought many smiles to the citizens of the city of Batavia as they take the slow roll down Redfield Parkway to view the trees the day after Thanksgiving, year after year. And whereas the city of Batavia recognizes Nick Sinney for his many years of dedicated services within the city, and he will be missed very much by the Redfield neighborhood. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Batavia hereby extends this proclamation to Nick Sinney for his devotion, dedication, and services to the city of Batavia. Signed by Council President Eugene Jankowski.
We all know the current community enjoys driving around the Redfield area.
Should I use the podium?
No, you can say it right away.
Sure.
Speak from there.
Sure.
I don't want to block you.
No, just.
The president, you know, sorry.
It's all right.
I forgot my location. I did prepare a couple of things, because I think they're important to say. First of all, it's a pleasure to be here for something other than challenging my property tax assessment. my property tax assessment. But I am honored, and I thank you all for that, and I thank you all for your service to the community as well. There's two points, quick points I'd like to make tonight. One is Bob mentioned a great many things that get done on the street, and I did not do that alone. It is a community. Kathy used to say, Kathy Owen used to say very often, she said, "Many hands make short work," and she was right. So the holiday lawn trees, the flags that go up every holiday throughout the year, that honor our freedoms, our loved ones that aren't with us any longer, the flowers at the pillars and at the turn circles and the medians, all those kinds of things are done by a great many people, and this recognition really belongs to them. The second point is, if there's a single individual that this belongs to, it's Kathy Owen. It's ironic that we lost Kathy three years ago today, and I miss my friend daily, but she was my mentor, and she provided me the perfect role model. If I've done anything successful, it's because of Kathy, and I'd like everyone to remember that. And my advice to everyone, when I talk, we're hoping that perhaps Redfield activities will set an example for the community. Every organization needs a lead person, or two or three. A street, a neighborhood, I heard discussion about a block party in Swan Street. I think those are beginnings, but you need lead people to get things done, to organize them, and you need people to look after people. I'm moving. It's killing me. I belong to a great many organizations. I'm Juan's president, and I serve other organizations such as Justice for Children. It's hard leaving all of them, but my real heart belongs to Redfield. Been there over 30 years, and I'm going to miss it, so I just want to say thank you to everyone, and stay safe. Pleasure.
Thank you.
Red Team Exercise Grant?
Thank you, Council President, members of council. Each year, the department participates in what's called the Red Team Exercise in Counterterrorism Zone 10 that is conducted by the New York State Police in association with the assisting agencies. This year, we are looking for a grant in the amount of $5,700. So it's actually a Department of Homeland Security grant. It's a pass-through to us, so we get reimbursed for actual wages that occur during that exercise. Thank you.
Thank you. So are we in consensus to move that to the next business meeting, which will be the June meeting? Do that move? Sidewalk bids?
Thank you, Council President. Before you, you have a resolution asking for council to move this forward to a future business meeting. We are putting out bids for sidewalks on Miller Avenue, Columbia Avenue, and Seneca Avenue. Those are the streets that we will be doing paving work on this year, and we need to finish up the sidewalks on Chase and Fisher, which we did paving on last year. As former DPW director has explained, we tried to do the complete streets approach, so whenever we are able to repave or resurface a roadway, we also look at the sidewalks to make sure they are now ADA compliant, they have appropriate widths for wheelchairs and passing lanes, and we'd like to move this project forward. And when the bids come in, we will bring that back at a business meeting.
Any questions? I did. Turn right.
Good, Council President. Rachel, I just have a question. I drove these streets because I have a passion in our neighborhood for sidewalks. So, and I had the June and Rosemary Walker sidewalks last year, and I'm getting complaints on the sidewalks, and the one I just forwarded to you recently, and I had to go over there and meet the gentleman who was so sad. The sidewalks on the streets in my neighborhood are worse than what I saw of the streets that I drove down, Seneca, Columbia, and Miller. So I guess what, I'm wondering what's the process of picking the streets, because should we start with the worst ones first and work our way up, or do we leave the worst ones the way they are and repair better ones first?
We do have a capital streets plan that's included in the budget book that we have been following for many years, and trying to identify those streets that need repair immediately, and then also doing the sidewalks with them, so there is a rotation throughout the city. And if you want to sit down, we can look through that, and I'd bring in, I'd have the DPW director meet with you on that, who unfortunately couldn't be here this evening because of a prior commitment. So, yeah, we do have a capital plan, and we do go through the streets, and they do with the Bureau of Maintenance and DPW every year, and update that plan and bring more streets on. Unfortunately, we only get so much revenue for chips every year, roughly $320,000, so we try to extend it as far as we possibly can between streets and sidewalks.
So what you're saying is these were chosen because we're doing work on that street anyway, so we're jumping on the sidewalks while we're doing one day.
We have for the past, I'd say 10 years, every time a street is done, the sidewalk is also done in that street area. But again, if we want to get into specifics, I don't have our complete streets master list in front of me, so I'd want to have that before I spoke about which streets and when.
Because I think, I mean, when they put the codeine and roster valves in some of our streets back two or three or four years ago, they did not touch sidewalks.
I would have to look into it. I can't answer that tonight.
Anyone else?
I think that was just a grind and repave though, wasn't it? Yeah, I think Rachel, normally it's where the streets totally reconstructed sidewalks are usually included, or they try including them for the grants and stuff.
But are we reconstructing Millers, Columbia, and Seneca this year?
No, we are repaving them, and we may mill and fill with them. So, but for your specific questions, I'd absolutely want to get you the appropriate information for the sidewalk. And we have a map that was handed out during the budget time that shows the streets and sidewalks that were done in the last few years, so you can have that to show constituents. And that always comes up. We do have, I would say, some of the best sidewalks in Western New York, and if you've gone to other cities, I won't name them, but you can barely push a baby carriage down them. So we do try very, very hard to continue to get out there. We also are limited because sidewalks are general fund monies. So again, there's only so much of that general fund to go around, and we try to do the best we can. But I can certainly, again, give the whole list of street improvements and the map to council for what was done, what is scheduled to be done, and if there's any further input, make sure DPW does that.
Rachel, let me ask you something, because I'm hearing a lot of complaints about the roads in general, just for just, now, okay, these streets are getting fixed. Now, is someone, is there a list where someone goes by and wherever they have like potholes or whatever, like I said, I can tell you, Redfield, Watson, I was just wondering, do they have like some type of process where they do that too?
Absolutely. So any citizens-
I was just wondering about it, Saturday Church.
Yep. Any citizens or residents that have a pothole can absolutely put their complaint in either online via the phone or in writing via mail to the Bureau of Maintenance, and they have a crew that goes around to fix those potholes. They also have a new program this year in the state budget called Pave Our Potholes POP. So there is extra money allocated to do more patching and fixes on the roads. And as everyone knows, living in Western New York, we have two seasons. We have snow, and then we have construction. And right now, they're trying to get out and rehab the roads to the best of their ability. They just finished Walnut. They just put the striping down, and they're looking to take on an extra project this year with those state touring route funds. So as soon as I have more details on that, I will bring them forward to council.
South Main Walnut, it's beautiful. It's beautiful.
You don't even need patience, because the blacktop plant's open till April anyway, so it's tough to get started before.
That's true. Yes. Good point, Polly. Thank you.
Another thing too, Tammy, for your understanding, if you remember back, probably 15, 20 years ago, the city was in fairly dire financial straits, and I think that's when the problem rose, is that there just wasn't the funds available to do a lot of this work. So our infrastructure suffered greatly for quite a few years. So we're still playing catch-up. In my opinion, we are. We're still catching up from those years where the infrastructure was just ignored because there was no money to do anything with. We were just, you know, at that point, the city council and city administration were just trying to keep their head above water. So I think the repercussions of those years are still showing up this far down the road, where we're just trying to catch up. And like Kathy said, when they go in and they do a job, when the job is complete, it's pretty impressive. Yeah, the sidewalks are beautiful, the street is beautiful. So they're doing it, they're doing complete packages at a time, which I think is a benefit to that neighborhood. So it's just that unfortunately, the neighborhoods that have lousy sidewalks still suffer. Or if you go out for a walk, I mean, my one side street that I tee up to was the same way. I take my dog for a walk, and it was very difficult walking on those sidewalks, and they finally replaced them after a lot of years. So hopefully, your neighborhoods will be on the list soon.
Also, people understand that if your New York concrete cracks, you're not going to get around it, and when frost hits under it, it's going to heave it. There's nothing you can do about it.
Right.
The only other good point is we look at more, I guess, safer trees to plant as well, so you're not planting large trees with large roots that upend parts of concrete as well. So I think people, our departments have gotten smarter as technology advances, and they understand the tree planting side of it as well, because it is also trees that we plant when we do a complete street as well. So happy to follow up with everyone with the information.
Adding to the complexity of the situation is also any sidewalks that aren't ADA compliant, to replace them, they have to be ADA compliant, which requires quite a bit more work, a lot more excavation, huge increase, and each ramp that goes into a street has to be architect, or engineering-wise signed off to meet the requirements of ADA. So it's quite complex.
In cost.
The old day, you go pull a few blocks up and pour some concrete. Now, it's a whole new ballgame. And it's unfortunate, though, that some of our residents still don't respect the sidewalks, and they park their vehicles over the sidewalk, especially all night. And I see it all the time. It's just, it's sad, you know? I mean, we do have pretty good sidewalks. We're trying to get on top of it, and people, make people go up the street and walk around the curb.
Any other? So are we in consensus to move the sidewalk bids to a future business meeting? Do you think it's move? Youth program funding agreement?
Yes, this is an annual agreement that comes to council, and it is for the youth services that the city provides, now contractually through the YMCA. And this year's grant amount is for $12,000, and the resolution is asking council to approve that and have the council president execute the agreement so we can receive these funds. And these are planned for and scheduled in the revenue side of the budget.
Any questions on that? Okay, so we in consensus to move that to a business meeting? The full-time ordinance enforcement officer position?
Thank you, Council President. The resolution you see before you is the creation of a new position, an ordinance enforcement officer. Currently, the city employs a full-time parking and recycling officer. The parking and recycling officer is responsible for parking, animal control, trash, and recycling, and a portion of the job is dedicated to citing high grass, weeds, and debris. Currently, the parking recycling enforcement officer position is funded evenly between the police department and the Bureau of Inspections, both general fund departments. The Bureau of Inspections, however, is responsible for enforcing all federal, state, and local regulations intended to control and preserve the safe construction, alteration use, and occupy of all buildings and other structures in the city. They also administer the city's building code, zoning laws, property maintenance ordinances, and these enhance the quality and attractiveness of the community. Currently, we have two full-time code enforcement officers. One was just hired in the past week, who is training and getting on the job, and their main duties involve issuing building permits, doing inspections on construction, reviewing large and small construction plans and drawings, issuing plumbing permits, acting as the floodplain manager for the city, and they also, these two positions staff the planning, zoning, and historic preservation committees. Through the analysis of the inspections department, myself and Director of Human Resources have found that there's not enough bandwidth between those two positions to be out and to be looking at code violations and grass, weed, and debris. And to have a full-time ordinance enforcement officer would allow the city to be more proactive in working with residences and neighborhoods with these types of issues. So I'm asking that council create this position and move this forward to the next business meeting.
Any questions I made personally?
Just one question, please. What are they going to do in the winter?
So in the winter, there's still code violations and court cases, and still working through property maintenance issues with residents. So there's still definitely work that can be done. And typically, when we go out, we like to start in February, March, and April, because then that gives property owners the summer to correct those violations, and then they work through code cases into the fall. They can also help the code enforcement officers that are there in the office with closing out permits and other duties.
So this is the part-time summer on just making it into full-time year?
No. This is taking the full-time parking and recycling officer, who does some code enforcement work, and making that, making a position that's full-time code enforcement while leaving the parking and recycling enforcement officer fully funded by police. So it's taking someone who did two jobs and making them each full-time jobs, each funded by their respective departments. I know it's, I think, one gentleman did a lot of work. So.
So now it's time to be focused, or their time will be focused on code violations.
Yes.
And then the police department will have their needs met by a person who does their specific enforcement only, so they won't be cross-enforcing what they have.
Yeah, and even the parking recycling officer could backfill at times, especially for garbage and recycling and those types of violations, because again, they're able to issue those violations from that position in that civil service job description.
I would hope there'd be some communication too, if they see something, to pass that out to the-
I will say that the police department and the codes department inspection bureau work very closely together, and I think they do a really nice job communicating amongst themselves and act like a team, even though they're not in the same building.
Rachel, would this position then be responsible to address like some of the problems that Bob had brought up in the winter months about like snow clawing and piles of snow on the sidewalks and things like that? Is that, would that person be responsible for that?
I think that's still the police department, right? Because that would be a hazard, roadway hazard. So I'm not sure, Sean, can you help me with that?
It might be a little bit of a gray area where that person can assist with some of those complaints, especially with some of the private claw operators on private property. But yes, anything within the right-of-way, the street blocking a sidewalk is, should strictly fall on the police department to handle. But again, it's one of those areas where there's a little bit enforcement on that side as well as on our side. So we'll work together to make that.
Any other questions? So we, is this going to work the next business?
Correct, the next business.
Moving this to the next business, do we, or do we like to do?
Yes, we need that.
Okay. The land use exemption agreement?
Thank you, Council President. Currently, the City of Batavia refers land use actions to the Genesee County Planning Board for a review and approval in many cases. These referrals typically include site plan reviews, use and area variances, exterior changes to buildings located within the downtown improvement district. In an effort to minimize cost and streamline the development process, the Genesee County Planning Board is allowing municipalities across Genesee County to enter into- to enter into a minor land use action exemption agreement that will eliminate the need to refer certain actions to the county planning board. However, municipalities still have the option, if they'd like to voluntarily refer those, they absolutely can. Is that correct, Felipe? Thank you, Felipe. So the items that will no longer need to be referred under this agreement are listed one through fourteen. Many other municipalities have signed on. We find that this will absolutely streamline the process, may speed up development in the city, and reduce some workload for the code enforcement officer that works directly with the county planning board for referrals. So I highly recommend that we take advantage of this and thank the county planning department and planning board for bringing this forward to help streamline our processes.
Any questions?
Well, I've seen Felipe there.
I know you have experience in that area.
It was my privilege to serve on the planning board, Felipe. And this was discussed when I was still on the planning board. I think it's a marvelous idea. It pushes everything back in the community. Because many times, we will make a recommendation and in the end, it still has to go back to the community. This does streamline the process. And I think it's going to give the locals a lot more say and a lot more interest in the community by doing so.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good.
So we're moving this to the next business?
Yes, we are.
So any concerns on that?
No.
We'll move that to the next business? I think it's moved. And the USDA Rural Development Program?
Yes, we discussed, thank you, council president, two months or so ago about the purchase for a new fire engine and working through the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development for a funding package. And we were awarded a funding package that includes six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar loan at two-point-five percent interest for twenty years, a grant of fifty thousand, and with the city contribution of twenty thousand, which will come from the fire department equipment reserves. As we discussed at the time, we need to replace engine twelve. This is on the capital plan for vehicle replacement. It is a twenty-year-old fire apparatus, a pumper. And Dan, correct me at any point if I have a lingo wrong. We would like to replace it with a new NFPA compliance-style rescue fire engine. And the estimated cost, a month or two ago, was seven-hundred thousand dollars. Whether that holds true today, we'll see. But I recommend that we accept this funding offer from USDA Rural Development. If we do so by the end of June, it's basically an informal letter from myself to them to move forward in the process, we'll be able to lock in the interest rate at two-point-five. Interest rates are supposed to go up again at the end of June. And even in the bond market right now, USDA financing hasn't always been the cheapest. But right now, I'm getting counsel from Jeff Smith of Municipal Solutions that we may be looking to do a lot more with USDA loans. As the bond market interest rates go up, USDA can try to keep theirs down. So at this point, just looking for the approval to move forward, there would be a full bond resolution or loan resolution to council at the time that we're able to finalize and close on the project.
And this would move to tonight's special?
Yes, it will, thank you.
Because of the time set?
Yep.
Any questions on that?
Now, will that new vehicle be a totally electric vehicle? I know there's people out there that are concerned.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, for seven-hundred thousand dollars, chief, will it be delivered with a full tank of fuel?
I'd be happy if it just had all the computer chips in it. So we're moving that to tonight's special business?
Yes.
Okay, a motion to adjourn, please. Mr. Beely? Seconded by Mr. Richmond. Call the row, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Costino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. And now, I call to order the special business meeting. Resolution forty-five, twenty-twenty-two. The Richmond Harvester Construction Project, Mr. Beely. And the resolution we just moved, forty-six, twenty-twenty-two, the USDA Rural Development. Correct me if I'm wrong. You want to start this off, Mr. Beely, please?
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution to implement a toll gas construction through the construction studios of the Richmond Harvester Highway P.I. Transportation Improvement Program, TIPAT, P.I.N. four-seven-six-one-zero-one project.
Seconded by Mr. McGinnis. Anyone want to make any comments or any concerns? Can you call the row, please?
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Costino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs? Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. Mr. Canelli, if you'll take Resolution forty-six, please?
Thank you, council president. I move a resolution to accept the funding offer from the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA Rural Development Community Facility Program for the purchase of a new fire engine and directs the city manager to execute documents related to the final funding application.
Seconded by, yes. Any questions or concerns? Call the row, please.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Costino?
Yes.
Mr. President, can I say a few words before we adjourn? Yeah, the parade's coming up Monday. Anyone on council, I haven't heard from council, so if you're going to attend, just RSVP. Send me a note so I know because we have a congressman will be there and some other people in county lunch.
You know I'll be there.
And also, anyone needing a ride, let me know, please. Because I can line up some rides for someone that can't walk the road, so that'd be great. And Al, if you'd like to participate, we have a convertible, you can jump in that with your friend Roy Stringham.
I want to see you jump.
Jump over the door, but let me know, please, just let me know. Thank you.
Very quickly, I just want to say that in absence a couple of years, but right now, BID is joining the parade and a lot of smaller groups are really getting excited about this, go arts, looking into it. There are groups getting ready to do this, so it's a good thing.
Yeah, we're getting a lot of small organizations participating.
That haven't been before.
Yeah, so. And also, right now, we're going to have a group that trains horses for side saddle riding. They'll be there. Younger horses, new horses, but that's pretty nice. Thank you.
Before we add, I just would like to take a moment of silence, if we could, please, for the tragic events that took place in Buffalo a short time ago. And the tragic loss of life that has affected our community as well as the whole surrounding community. And I just want to, we can just take a moment and just kind of reflect on it and remember those people and how this whole thing went down. Thank you very much, and hopefully, this will never happen again. Will you motion to adjourn? Mr. Richmond? Call the row, please.
Councilmember Richmond? Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Costino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
We are adjourned.